We're not going to call the meeting order just yet. We don't start for six, but what we are going to do is go ahead and start with our invitation. And so I'd like to recognize Reverend Noah Bailey of the Enid Reform Church to do our invitation and you're representing the Enid Ministerial Alliance, correct?
Yes, sir.
If you could go ahead and lead us, we appreciate it.
All right, let's bring it up. Our Father in Heaven, we give you thanks for this good day. We give you thanks for rain. We give you thanks for beautiful weather. We give you thanks for a beautiful city. But Father, in this short and fleeting life, we especially give you thanks for children, for those who will take our place in this world. And we pray, Father, for the work tonight that is done, that it would be pleasing to you, full of wisdom, full of grace, full of humility, full of unity and peace. We pray, Father, that the work tonight would bless this city and would strengthen the hearts, the minds, the hands, the work of our future generations. Father, raise up in this city, young people of wisdom and of strength and of energy, who will build this city up and who will bring you great glory. Father, remember these men and women tonight, giving them great grace and great wisdom, that they would lead and guide the hearts and minds of many into maturity, into wisdom. Bless their decisions, that they would be good for the schools of this city, that they would be good for our future. For we trust these things into your hands and give you all the glory, and pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Good work, Reverend Bailey.
Good day, sir.
And we do appreciate the Ministerial Alliance always helping us out, so pass that on, please.
Will do.
That does bring us to the six o'clock hour, and so we will call the meeting to order. And I believe we'll start with our student pledge, leader and the presentation of coaches. Would that be correct?
Yes, sir. I would just like to introduce Mrs. Cruz, Jennifer Cruz, who is the principal of Philadelphia Elementary School.
Our spotlight student for this evening is Micah Buffalohead. He is the student of Julia Hale and Chris Magel. He is a fifth grader in our school, an academic student, a very good young man who works very hard at what he does. His favorite parts of school are P.E. and recess, and he likes corral, which is our intervention time. And occasionally, he might do something along the lines of student council. He is a member of our student council as a class representative. Our student council just started back up this year after about a 20-year hiatus, so he was one of our first new inductees. So he likes to play basketball and football and soccer and just be a boy and run. So, Micah, we'll wait for the caller guard, then we'll get started.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for making us hear you. This is suitable for finding a heading on the floor. Student spot.
Yes, for this, I'd like to introduce Mr. Beauchamp, Adam Beauchamp from Waller Middle School. We're happy to have him here. He's the only person in the district who can do that.
Ethan, come on up here with you, if you would. I'm going to introduce Ethan Ravender. Ethan's the son of John and Kerry Ravender. John, his father is actually serving overseas right now, so he's off to fill in the ceremony for us, but his dad is in the Air Force. Ethan has lived in four different states. Ethan's up here tonight because he's pretty much wins about every award we have at Waller. Last spring, he received 14 awards in our spring award ceremonies, with the notable ones for the top AR points for reading, the Golden Eagle Award, which shows for the top sixth-grade male student, as well as perfect attendance. He's a seventh grader currently. He's taking Algebra I and all pre-AP core classes, including competing in track this spring. He's a member of our National Junior Honor Society. He participates in a variety of community service activities, as well as his youth group at Oakwood Christian Church. His hobbies are building with Legos, reading mythology and fiction, and his favorite series is the Harry Potter series. Ethan has a little presentation here, and I don't know if you might be interested, we can turn this. Yes, perfect. All right, Ethan?
I'm Ethan Ravender, representing Waller Middle School, and I'm here to talk about the unique and exciting things we do at Waller. Every Monday, we have student-led assemblies, where we start off with a joke of the day, then a student comes up and performs a talent. Then we have a weekly highlight video on guest speaker. We do these assemblies for all of the students and teachers to come together in one room and cheer for our school. Every Friday, we have student clubs, where students can choose to do a certain activity that they couldn't do when they picked their electives. I'm in the robotics club, and am currently building a robot to pick up a weighty beef ball, because they're on top of an eighteen-inch hot hoop. Last Thursday, we had the makers fair, which is a science fair, but it's for the clubs to show off their finished products that they have done during their clubs. The robotics club had their arena set out with two robots that students could interact with, as well as showing off a marble run. I was building a robot with another student, and then other students were programming a robot arm. Last October, we had a zombie run to encourage health and fitness. Students could participate in a 5K or a one-mile run. After the runs, we had several booths set up for the students to interact with. There was an archery one, there was a fishing booth, as well as the fire department and police department were there, and several weightlifting techniques were taught at the run. Our school does accelerated reader, where a student can read a book, then take a test on it, rewarding them with points to go toward their reading goals set by their reading teacher. We recently had a trip, a contest, for the top forty readers. They would win a trip to Stillwater. I was one of the top forty, and we toured OSU's athletic department, as well as going to Highway Pizza and Escondios. I'm the National Junior Honor Society, and the big focuses of this group is academic success, as well as community service. I've done four community service opportunities this semester and plan to do six this semester. This week, we will be doing our annual Waller Gives to Others program, where each advisory class is going to be doing some projects, such as putting together stockings or food bags to give to less fortunate people in our community. Waller also has a boot camp for sixth graders that are coming to Waller, where they can learn about our school, meet their teachers, and find where our classes are, as well as participating in fun activities set up by our teachers. We have, I've done three special trips during my time at Waller. I have gone to the Science Museum of Oklahoma City with my sixth-grade pre-October class, as well as being invited to take an academic to Oklahoma School of Science and Athletics. We do a lot of fun projects at Waller. In my sixth-grade science class, we built a trebuchet. And in my technology education class, I built a six-inch tower that held 202 pounds. The tower was built out of falls, fallsalot. When we had the sixth-grade awards assembly, I came out with 14 awards. Among those were Golden Eagle Award, top AR, and perfect attendance. Thank you for your time.
Did you choose the slides for that presentation?
Yes.
And I noticed that you must know a little bit about public affairs, because you have super finishers. Quite a few of the parents can be ladies, so thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good job.
Does anybody sign up for all of these? Okay. Going on then, bringing the reports of the federal programs. Miss Funtz, guys?
I mean, Dr. Floyd mentioned to our administrative group that the board was interested in having reports from the different programs that we have in the public schools and that we offer. I raised my hand immediately, not because I was anxious to be here for the board, but our district is going to be monitored from the State Department of Ed this spring. And part of that monitoring, it's kind of like the Boy Scout troop. Part of that monitoring is we have to have on our agenda that we have presented to the board. So it's not that I'm all that anxious, though I'm sorry to be here, it's just that it's kind of a case of need. We are going to be monitored from the federal programs. All of them will be monitored right after the first of the year, and that will be January 14th and 15th.
Well, it's just right around the time that the new state superintendent takes over, so.
Very interesting.
There'll be a lot of transition during that time period, so that's when it's scheduled for right now, so we'll see if they.
Dr. Floyd and I are kind of holding out for transition.
We'll see.
We have six federal programs, four of which are monitored through our State Department of Ed. Title I is the largest funded program that we have. It serves students that are needing improvement in reading and math, and it is a poverty-based program. The higher the poverty of the site, the more funding that they get, and that would be set up on a per pupil expenditure. Our budget for the Title I program this year will be 1.9 million. That covers instructional services, supplementary instruction, supplementary materials, as well as professional development and parental involvement. Those are the main areas that are funded through the Title I program. Title II would be the second-largest funded, and Title II focuses on professional development, primarily in the reading and math area, but they also recognize the core subject area, but they really like for us to be sure that we've got the reading and math professional development areas covered through Title II. Our main expenditure for Enid right now in Title II are the instructional coaches. We have here with us tonight three of them. We had two instructional coaches, and this year, we made the decision to expand that program to four instructional coaches to serve district-wide, to help professional development onsite for all of our sites. They serve four-year-olds through 12th grade. We're very, very pleased with the progress of that program. Feel like it's a very good expenditure of our Title II professional development money. Title III is a program that serves the English language learner population. Primarily, it serves the students that are zero and limited English speaking. The primary focus of that program is to, for language proficiency. They are expected to take tests, the state mandated test, just like the other students are. They have two years, and then after that, they're taking the state mandated test. And their level of English proficiency is very, very critical. And we have teachers, as money affords, we have supplementary language acquisition tutors for teachers in the buildings with the most population. Title I Part D is probably the smallest of our four title programs that comes through the State Department, and that serves the neglected students that are housed at the Sequoia Boys' Home and the students that are at the Garfield County Detention Center. Carl Perkins is another federal program that is monitored from the state level, but it's monitored to career tech at Stillwater, not through our federal programs office, title office at the Oklahoma City. Title VII serves our Native American population, and we, primarily this year, this is supplemented at the elementary level. We are, as you've all heard, we're having tremendous difficulty in having a good pool of tutors and teachers to cover some of these areas. So we're still working on trying to place some of those people at the middle school and high school. Any questions? Dr. Floyd, want to add anything to that?
Well done. I think that gives a very brief and concise overview of the entire program, and as Viv said, it kind of kills two birds for us tonight. It gives you guys an opportunity to hear from one of our directors, but also, as I was heard, check the box off on reporting to the board prior to the State Department visit coming up in January.
A point of interest, the total of our federal funding for this year is 2.6 million. I don't mess with that in my checking account, but I like to play with the numbers in my desk.
Is that number based on the number of students in a particular area that we have in our system?
It is a per pupil expenditure. We get our funding based on number of students. Like the ELL is, all of them are per pupil expenditure. So, the Title I Part A is a poverty-based program, and that is based on our census. I don't remember what year their census year they're using right now.
2010.
Okay. But that's based on census, and that's determined at the federal level. Most of the rest of them are determined at the state level.
I was just going to ask, I know that Part D, the number of students we serve fluctuates quite a bit.
It really doesn't fluctuate. It doesn't fluctuate very much because they have such a limited space. So pretty much, if they have sixteen beds, if one loses in, they lose somebody. If one moves out, they lose somebody off the end. That really, at Sequoia, they have sixteen beds, and at Garfield County Detention Center, they have ten. And it pretty much stays, it's a difficult program because you don't have enough time to work with the students to see the game that we need. I mean, and they always ask about graduation rate. Well, that's a moving target all the time.
But that's figured in with our graduation rate?
That is, it depends on where the students come from. And a lot of the students that we have in both of those facilities are not Enid Public School students. They come, a lot of them, last year in particular, went and served at the Park City. So that's taken into consideration.
The max of twenty-six would be?
Yes. And that per pupil is not the same for all of those. They're two separate little pockets in there.
If I could editorialize for just a second. When you take the title of federal program and then add to that the IDB programs, the special education programs, that's a total of $4.1 million in federal funding that comes to the district. But please remember that we fund that upfront with local dollars and then request to be reimbursed, and there are some significant hoops to jump through to get that money back from the state. The claiming process is becoming increasingly cumbersome.
Carl and I know a lot of people on a first-name basis.
Thank you for being a good food jumper.
Yeah.
One question. From the Title II program, you said that's based on after two years of state test to demonstrate efficiency. What is the pass rate that we have to meet in order to keep that funding?
I really can't answer that. I'd have to check that out. Oh, you mean to keep the funding?
Yes.
We right now, there's no pass rate to keep the funding. As a matter of fact, I asked that question earlier because on the Title III, we have, it's federal law that we have to give a language proficiency exam to all students that qualify for limited English speaking, or to the ELL program, English language learner. That's the ELL program. It's called the WEATA test, and they have to have a proficiency rate on that WEATA test. And they do gauge each district on how many reach proficiency, how many show a gain on the language assessment, and also how they do on the state mandated assessment. That's the three areas that we're judged on. Well, right now, one of the, the package that I sent to you, that's a school improvement plan for Title III. And because we missed two out of three, we're on improvement plan right now for language. And that was my, because that's one of the things they'll tell you. If you don't meet all three of these areas, then you will be, one of the things is, is you can lose your funding. So I called the State Department. I said, okay, are we going to lose our funding? Because there's no sense in spending a lot of time on an application if you're not going to, oh, no, 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 we're not going to, you're not going to lose your funding. But again, it's like Mr. White said, we're jumping through hoops. And one of the things that, all the statistics tell us that it takes seven years for a student to become proficient when they come in at zero English. Seven years. And yet, we're having all these tests at them, and a third-grade ELL student is just hit from all sides. There's no fair there.
And then, if I may, that's an area that the instructional coaches are working on as well. So they've spent several days pulling apart the numbers and checking to see, you know, what areas instructional we can improve on, and then taking that information to teachers.
We don't have the pool of teachers to teach a bilingual, you know, dual-language class. We don't, if they're dual-language, they're in South Texas getting stipends for being dual-language. We don't have the resources to do what's really needed for these students, and our population is increasing. We're bigger this year than we were last year, percentage-wise.
Anything else for Viv?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, next agenda item is the instructional coach. Are we going to hear from y'all?
One of our four instructional coaches, Leslie Wicker, is ill tonight, so she wasn't able to join us, but you guys could, they never asked me to do that.
But it's so entertaining.
Well, we're getting set up just a minute. This is Kristen Jones in the red sweater over here by the computer. I'm Sherri Henry. This is Rhonda Harlow. Our instructional coach, Leslie Wicker, is home with the flu this evening, so she sends her regards. We are pleased to be able to share with you tonight a little bit about what we do daily for Enid Public Schools. And we have a short little movie to show you. We'll start with that, and then we'll follow up just a little bit.
It's on.
It's on.
It's on.
So I hope that gives you a little bit of an idea of what we do on a daily basis. We are onsite professional developers. We work with every one in the district, from teachers to administrators, helping them help improve instructional strategies. We just do professional development in all realms. Rhonda's handing out a handout for you that will give you an idea, a little bit more about instructional coaching, if you're not familiar with that term. But we have had training at the University of Kansas under Jim Knight, who is one of the leading researchers in instructional coaching, probably in the nation. And we've gone to a couple of his trainings. This is one of the things that we garnered from there. We adopted these partnership principles. One of the things we also do is work with individual teachers. So we work in groups, we work with whole staffs, but oftentimes, we also coach individual teachers. These are the partnership principles we use as we do that and work with teachers. So we're just pleased to be able to showcase a little bit about what we do for the district, and we'll take any questions if you have those.
I have a question, but it probably doesn't, it's probably not about coaching, but it's about words I saw in your, I saw the term phonological awareness. Are we still, do we still teach phonics in reading?
Absolutely.
Well, let Rhonda have it.
Yeah, and we do a foundational reading series. Yeah, and we, we do a foundational reading series, um, that we're working with. We have done with the elementaries. We're getting ready to start a foundational reading series with the secondary, um, teachers also. And yes, we do. We go in and talk about the foundational, um, principles, the foundational things that are needed in order to be an effective reader. And so there is a process that we go through, and that's being able to, phonological awareness is the foundation to all reading. Be able to hear the sound.
You say that much earlier than I did.
And, um, and then on that phonological awareness we build, and we, we attach our phonics. So, and then with phonics, we move into fluency, which moves into our vocabulary and our comprehension. So yes, absolutely, we still teach, um, phonological awareness and phonics.
She's showing off now.[644.91][644.94][laughter] She's like inserted about a half of it.[648.41][648.44][laughter] Well, we're on camera, so I'm not going to try to say anything.[653.15][653.18][laughter] Thank you. Any other questions?
I would just add that, uh, I think the addition of two additional instructional coaches was, uh, a great show of support from this board into the instructional effort of the district. And, uh, it's, it's a, it's a great feather in our district's cap to have these four ladies that can go out and work hands-on with teachers, hopefully, better prepare students. So, uh, ladies, I appreciate the effort you guys give us on a daily basis. And, um, I, um, I think that it's, uh, it's going to be very beneficial for a lot of kids. So, thank you for that, and thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for that report.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.[701.21][701.24][applause]
Hopefully, Leslie gets better.
We do, too.[708.21][708.24][laughter]
Melanie, I got you next on my agenda.
Okay. I want to say that, um, the coaches are the glue that holds everything together in terms of our professional development and making sure that our teachers are as effective as they can be. So I, I feel like it's important for Randy and me to show how much we rely on them. We meet with them monthly, so, uh, we're in constant communication with them. Um, this graduation report fulfills a requirement as well, an accountability requirement, but it's also, uh, hopefully, a way for me to put some numbers in context. Then Mike, just do your own thing. We have a couple of different ways that we can measure graduation rate. In 2011, we started, Oklahoma started following federal guidelines for a four-year adjusted cohort rate. Um, they collected data, and then the first time we actually had a number to report, a percentage to report, was in 2013. So based on federal guidelines for cohort groups, which means that we follow students from the ninth grade all the way through to graduation, and that data is collected through the Oklahoma State Department of Education. You can see our rate for 2013, eighty-seven point five percent. And then last year, we increased our graduation rate through adjusted cohort four-year at eighty-eight point two percent. However, we still have, uh, data that's being collected through the Office of Educational Quality and Accountability, the School Report Cards. Do you guys remember those before A through F? And they're still collecting data on those, and you can go to schoolreportcard.org. It's actually a, it's, it's really a good data report because it provides more comprehensive information than A through F on how our schools are doing. And so what they calculate is the senior graduation rate. So you can see, you could go all the way back to 2009 to get graduation rate, but for 2013, our graduation rate was ninety-eight point seven percent of seniors, entering seniors and then graduating seniors. The state average was ninety-seven point six percent. And if I could just go back to the four-year adjusted cohort rate, the Southern Regional Education Board recently reported that of our fourteen states, uh, we're about eighty percent graduation rate on the four-year adjusted cohort rate. So we're above our regional average, and that also matches with the national average for adjusted cohort. So we're above that average as well. College remediation rates. The Regents for higher ed request that we report on remediation rates. And so as of last year, 2013, we're at twenty-nine point six percent. You'll hear a number tossed around in newspaper articles across the state that Oklahoma has a remediation rate of forty-three percent, but, uh, it's really closer to thirty-nine or forty percent because the forty-three percent number includes freshmen who are twenty-one years old and who are going back to college later. And it also includes the rate of, um, for first-time freshmen who are entering community college. So the longer it takes a student from high school to enter as a first-year freshman, the more likely that person will be to need remediation. Uh, but we're below our community group average, and we're also below the state average for remediation rate.
How, how is that tracked?
It's through ACT scores, and it's through those students who, uh, because they've scored below a sub-score of nineteen, then the college will not accept, um, for reading, math, and science, uh, that score. So they enroll those students in a remedial course. Um, and so since remediation rate is tracked by ACT, it's important for us to pay attention to our ACT score. Randy and I delivered an academic report in August, and at that time, I didn't have our current ACT report, but I do now. So, uh, for transparency, I want to be sure that we're presenting to you those numbers over time. And you can see that our score did dip slightly last year, maybe significantly, depending on how you look at the numbers. But, uh, we have been testing more students at the sophomore level. And so when I talked to the high school about that, and we started to talk about, now, it's important to not just take one year's number and, you know, panic, we need to look for trend lines. But we did notice that we had a dip in math, and we had a dip in science. So the high school is, and you noticed that we didn't test as many seniors last year because they really put a lot of effort into making sure that we were testing sophomores and juniors. And ACT, uh, their final report only includes the number of seniors that are tested. So they're making some adjustments. Um, they're still pushing at sophomore level to try to get as many sophomores tested to get that first-time experience as they can, but they're also making sure that they're paying attention to that senior number as well. And, um, they're having curriculum discussions in their science department and their math department. Um, to be fair, last year was the year that we were supposed to be fully transitioning to Common Core. And so that was a lot of energy and a lot of effort that went into our curriculum work.
Melanie, wouldn't a factor also be the fact that students that take the test as sophomores and juniors and are satisfied with their score, would be bothered to take it again as seniors?
That's true. So once they reach a score that's acceptable for college entrance, which is twenty-four at OSU and OU, um, they may not retake the ACT as seniors. Once they hit the mark, whatever mark they believe that they're, they're happy with, then they'll stop.
But if they take it multiple times, is only their highest score utilized?
They'll use a composite score. So ACT's really gotten much better about collecting their best scores in certain areas and then pulling that into a composite score. So what are we doing to, you know, taking all of this information, graduation rate? The high school certainly is always wanting to work on that and improve that. Uh, ACT and making sure we're having as many students test an ACT as need to test or as we can push to test who are likely to go on to college. Um, so we're working through our TLE, our Tulsa Model Evaluation, to make sure that principals are having those coaching conversations with teachers so that we can maximize their effectiveness in the classroom. Uh, we're meeting with our curriculum teams. The high school has PLCs that meet by subject area, so there's conversations going on in Algebra I and Biology and all of the curriculum areas to increase standards and continually keep an eye on that rigorous curriculum. Um, we're also, we have increased our English and Language Learner Services. They've talked a little bit about that earlier in her report, that we have a full-time ELL instructor at the high school, and she's monitoring students and helping make sure that they have a pathway to college if that's something that they're interested in doing. Uh, we're strengthening our advisory intervention program, making sure that those eighth graders that are coming in as freshmen have the support system that they need to be successful. Our virtual academy is serving sixty-seven students currently for credit recovery, and, um, some of those students will go on to career tech, and some of them will go on to college. So we're open to all opportunities for those students, and we don't want them to get behind in their credits and keep that, uh, and make that, uh, be a deterrent to their graduation. And then Lincoln Academy has seventy-seven seniors that we're serving this year. Um, we're also beefing up our response to intervention services at the high school, which is difficult for a high school to do. You'll hear a lot more about RTI in elementary and the middle school setting, but the high school has gone to training for response to intervention, and so that's something that they're looking at as well and building more supports for students. And then just, uh, some recent numbers. This fall, sixty-four students participated in the planned PSAT, and we've expanded opportunities to middle school students. So we've had more middle school students participate this last fall than we have in the past, and we're continuing to see how we can grow that number. Um, the high school reached out to NOC this year in arrangements for twenty-five seniors who wouldn't normally have taken the ACT or have taken it and whom have scored a high enough score to take a residual ACT at NOC. So that's something new that they've done. They've formed a partnership there. And then last year, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight college hours were earned through our students in concurrent enrollment classes. Uh, the high school is also going to offer a parent night so parents can, uh, help complete their FASDA application this year. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Can I have about any of those numbers?
Could we go back to graduation rate? And I'm looking there, and I see, tell me if I'm reading this correctly. Of freshmen, we're graduating eighty-eight point two percent that started our freshman year.
That's right. As, as we're tracking the cohort group, we, by law, by federal guidelines, we are supposed to now be tracking them starting freshman year, following all the way through to graduation.
But am I correct that somewhere between freshman and senior, we're losing like ten percent?
We're losing students, yes.
That's not unique to this district.
No, I know, but that, still, it's, that's forty kids in a, in a class of four hundred.
I just had a conversation with Mr. Mitchell this morning, and, uh, because they have gone to response to intervention training, they're increasing their freshman support. And so we've been talking about plans for next year to do things like double-block them for math class, for instance. If they fall behind in Algebra I, um, they're not as likely to graduate from high school. We know this early. We can determine this within the first four weeks of school, more than likely. And so if we know it early, then what are we doing for intervention early so that we can prevent them from dropping out later?
Do you feel that the numbers are, are pretty good? I know for a while, we had a horrible time tracking our students, and they would just leave, and we didn't know whether they entered school again or that they were counted as dropouts.
I think since we first started this process, we're getting better at tracking our data, and the state is helping us with this. They track students by student information number, student testing number. And so if a student leaves our district and enrolls in another district, that's in Oklahoma, that's picked up through the state system.
But you're right, Willa Jo, that it still takes communication from our high school when a kid withdraws to try to make sure that they get in somewhere else such that we don't have to carry them as a dropout.
What about kids that are, um, state out advanced, unless they're actually going to state? How's that tracked?
They don't count as a dropout for us. So we know that they will track, like Dr. Floyd said, that they're enrolled in another school. We get a request for records from schools, and that's one way that we can track, and then they are not counted as a dropout for us.
Well, on the senior rate, we're above state average. Do you know what the state average is as far as the four-year?
I have been trying to locate that, and I've worked through the State Department, and I have not found it, but I will let you know as soon as I find it. Um, you know, it's not been that long since the state has been required to collect this data. So I have a feeling our numbers, uh, are a little cleaner than theirs are at this point.
Thank you, nothing like me.
Good stuff. Thank you, Melanie, well done.
Okay, well, brings us to our regular agenda items. And the first, uh, items we need to look at are consent items, and I believe we can take anything under Roman numeral four A as a group. So that would, that would include four A one through four A seven. And, uh, unless someone wants one of those removed to discuss separately, I would entertain a motion to throw the consent out. So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that brings us to Roman numeral four B. Let's talk about general fund and encumbrance.
The, uh, general fund and encumbrances, purchase order seventeen ninety-four, see eighteen eighty, in a total amount of two-hundred-sixty-seven thousand, six-hundred-eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Administration recommends approval of these encumbrances.
We approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four B two.
Change orders in the general fund since the twelfth day of November. Uh, purchase orders one through seventeen ninety-three in the total amount of three-hundred-eighty-one thousand, one-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Administration recommends approval of these encumbrances.
We approve.
Second.
Motion and second, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Four B three. One building fund encumbrance, purchase order number sixty-four for a total of twenty-one thousand, five-hundred-two dollars and fifty-six cents. Recommend approval. So moved?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that activity fund.
Activity fund for donations and gifts encumbrances, purchase order sixteen through forty-one, which by the way, the bulk of those are for the EDA public school foundation grants to teachers, which we received that money , uh, within the last couple of weeks. A total of forty-three thousand, eight-hundred-five dollars and six cents. Uh, recommend approval of those encumbrances.
We approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Brings us to the financial report.
Yeah, you have it in your electronic packet. I have available the detailed copies. If anyone would be interested in one of these. I may start printing fewer of those. Uh, the one-line summary, which is kind of color-coded, green for collections, and reddish, I guess that's reddish, for, um, encumbrances and payments. Uh, in the general fund, we collected through the end of November twenty-three million, seven-hundred-twenty-one thousand dollars in round numbers. And at that point, we had encumbered fifty-four million, six-hundred-and-forty-six thousand in round numbers and issued payments of seventeen million, six-hundred-twenty-four thousand dollars in the general fund, leaving an unencumbered balance on our appropriation of about four million dollars and a cash balance after issuing those warrants of six million, ninety-six thousand in round numbers. That's the largest fund through which we operate most of our, um, instructional and other functions within the district. Uh, the building fund and municipal tax levy funds, the bond funds, and our sinking fund. Similarly, I would be glad to answer questions if anyone has any. Again, this is activity through the end of November, and we're on target, uh, based on our projections at this point. If there are no questions, we entertain a motion to approve the report as presented. Again, this printed backup report has individual reports for each fund, which provide greater detail if one is interested in looking through those. And there also in this are copies of all of the other activity funds. I might just add that in addition to that activity fund... I might just add that in addition to that activity fund, we approved some encumbrances on earlier, the activity fund for donations and gifts. There is a district-wide elementary activity fund, which is fund sixty-one. A high school activity fund, which is fund sixty-two. And then there are activity funds for Emerson, Longfellow and Waller Middle Schools, fund sixty-three, sixty-four and sixty-five. The child nutrition activity fund is for the purpose of collecting lunch payments from parents. That is transferred to the general fund on a monthly basis. And then of course, fund sixty-seven is that activity fund for donations and gifts. Those are spendable gifts that we don't put into a permanent endowment and spend only the interest earnings. We spend the entire gift in those gifts and donations.
He's, he's making a sales pitch. Doesn't anybody want one of those packages?
Just trust him. But I will, will save some paper if I print it. There is, but can't seem to have it.
Is there a motion to approve the financial report?
We approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, fun stuff now. Carl's going to take on the job as the color man on the football. Is Carl, Carl?
I'll say a word of introduction on this one. Um, you guys know that we have, um, uh, Mark Ray back here and Diana Hasslett, uh, over here, uh, doing our, uh, media now. They're our media specialists. And, um, we also, um, are involving students, uh, in media productions now. And this, uh, Gameview TV is an opportunity to, um, as you see listed on the agenda, it's an opportunity for, uh, to provide our students with not only broadcasting opportunities, but also, uh, curriculum services as well. So I'm gonna let, uh, Jeff, um, take it from there.
I can't reach that, so.
We've had a couple of different presentations from this group and you can, uh, see listed at the top of that first sheet, uh, the, some of the school districts that are already, uh, in contact with this group. Go ahead, Jeff.
Wanted to show you some of the content or some of the, yeah, some of the content that is produced as part of this program. It is a student-led program. So wanted to just take a quick minute and show you some of it. This is an adult doing commentary, right? Students doing everything else. They're doing the, the filming. They've created the scroll at the bottom. They're updating the scores. They have at least three students manning cameras. One student in the director's booth. And another one's operating the, uh, system that's switching back and forth between cameras. Simple example of Robin Arrow. Here's a basketball game from.
Going to, yep, going for two. So close to the three-point line, too.
So taking the three and misses.
Rebounded by Solomon. Over to York. Slowing down the pace there.
Giving the pitch.
Over to Nance.
Oh, he's not. Just a quick viewing of some of the stuff that other schools are doing with the product. Um, Vixby's actually gone far enough. They have cameras behind those, um, goalposts so they can do a, a basket shot. They've gone, they've gone above, beyond what most schools do by adding that to the system.
All right, so if you'll take a look at that attachment that you have for, uh, item four D there. Uh, call your attention to the, uh, segment in the middle which says administrative consideration. This outfit will provide the services and broadcast platform, um, in return for share of the sponsorship revenue at seventy percent of sponsorship sold by their group. Or if one of our folks sells a sponsorship, it's, uh, fifty percent of that sponsorship sold. So that's kind of how the revenue stream would, uh, work. Uh, this, uh, Outfit TV TV, uh, tells us that they, uh, work really well with, uh, radio stations and, uh, um, doing the sound for the games, just like you heard that adults on the football game. The kids were doing the video, but, uh, uh, radio broadcast was dubbed over that. And, uh, so that's a possibility. And I think there'll be a lot of different possibilities for our kids to get, uh, exposure and involvement in, uh, broadcast. There are loads of them in a number of different capacities. So let's see, we have a second, um, uh, attachment there, I believe, that actually has a contract. Let me, uh, get back to that.
It's got pictures, too.
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, see, uh, the attachment just has agreement with GPTV. The good thing about this is that, um, there is a thirty-day out clause for either side and that's always good to have in a contract because if, uh, you go south on either end or you can get out of it within thirty days. But as far as we can ascertain, uh, the districts that have contracted with these folks are pleased with it and it's been going well thus far. So we'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have about that.
What sponsorship level are you, are we interested in going to?
Uh, what do you mean?
We do sponsor. In the contract, there are different.
Those are the people that advertise like, uh, uh, like.
Okay.
Uh, Hobby Lobby would probably want to be.
That's great, exactly.
Largest sponsorship known to mankind, probably. So it's not us. It's, uh, the sponsors that, uh, kick in.
And what sporting events would we initially be broadcasting?
The goal would be to reach as many as we can. Um, we'll see in the contract, um, they do ask that we do forty sporting events. You do ten football games. That's a fourth of your program. Uh, basketball games or any sport that has a male and female varsity program. Each of those count as one. So you get a boys and girls basketball game one night. That's two. So we see it being able to do basketball games, um, baseball games, softball games, volleyball. Um, basically any sport the district really wants coverage of. I think we can get out. Um, there are schools that do wrestling. You can pay attention if any school has done swimming, but I mean, we could do a swim meet.
This is broadcast over the Enid TV that also carries our meetings or?
Let me, let me clarify that statement. The, the broadcast allows the students to take a package of equipment to an event. Um, via cellular, it sends their signal back to GPT's headquarters. They will then multicast it or make the, the standard streams you see here. That's called a multicast. They'll make it multicast on the internet. That stream would then be connected to Enid TV. That, but it would actually be streaming from GPTV in Claremore. Um, we've also been in discussions talking about channel nineteen. Um, we believe we can work out an agreement to pull that content onto channel nineteen at the same time or in a delayed format. Um, so anybody that doesn't have the internet, that suddenly would be able to watch the content also.
Then, then I hear them say that they could replay that, uh, the recording of the game later on.
Yes, we'd be able to download it, replay it on channel nineteen anytime.
But it would be live on the internet during game time?
Yeah. Yeah, the game's going on. It's live streaming, uh, real, whatever, real time. It's about a five-second delay just because it's going over cellular by Claremore then to the internet and then to your computer. Close to real time as we can.
But for these purposes, it's athletic events that we're talking about.
Well, that's where, they want you to do forty athletic events. But we can do anything else we want to with this system. We own it. Uh, we own the equipment. As long as we're meeting the forty sporting events, we can do it. We can do it for board meetings. We could have kids come in and do board meetings. Um, or we can do graduations.
Plays?
Any plays that we have broadcast rights for, um, or any, any assemblies or anything like that that we have rebroadcasting rights for.
But if, if this goes, is this what you're planning for? I know our board meetings are going to be telecast again, so is this what you're planning? Is it going to go through the Enid TV or wherever?
Will not go through the Enid TV. There's currently equipment in the construction of the boardroom next door. Four, there are four cameras currently in the plans. Um, those systems run back to a broadcast unit that will broadcast to the internet. That's a stationary unit that will stay in that AV room that's behind the boardroom and doesn't move. So basically what we're looking at is getting equipment that's portable, a little bit smaller than what would be in the boardroom. And the boardroom, we would be able to broadcast to the internet and live to channel nineteen at the same time. That will be, that will be done once everything's set up and running in the boardroom.
Okay, just to clarify this, because there's so much talk about channel nineteen. This, all we're talking about here is our school district agreeing to do broad, or to allow ourselves basically to do videoing of sporting events and other events for Enid Public Schools. That's it. Has nothing to do with channel nineteen and what is broadcast on there, except for the fact that if we eventually connect the two.
Yes, it would. Yeah, if we enter the agreement, we would now appear as one of the schools in Six A. Um, when you go into the school itself, um, they will create a landing page or homepage with us based on our graphics, our design. And they also create what are channels, which are channels for sports and they do that swimming. Um, here are the sports that Vixby has video for. So they've recorded all those events at one time and have that video archived on the system that could be viewed anytime.
And this, this contract also includes curricula for the instructional units to teach our students how to do this broadcast term. So I think that's an important aspect that you can touch on.
I have a couple of questions. It says that we give them the perpetual exclusive rights to broadcast this. Is that any concern to you?
Well, that's the reason that I like the fact that it had the thirty-day out clause in there.
And then that.
That would allow us to get out at any time with thirty days' notice.
And then, uh, the commentators, the, I would guess that the teacher who is in charge of this program would assign the students to their different responsibilities.
Could be radio guys doing the commentary.
It won't be students.
It could be the students, uh, doing the commentary.
But if it is students, that teacher would be?
Oh, yeah. The teacher would definitely.
Assign all these jobs.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, and there are a lot of hoops that they have to jump through there on what they can kind of say on camera.
That's what I was kind of concerned about.
Yeah.
They don't recommend.
Also delay.
They don't recommend that a student, um, do commentary unless they've been in the program for at least a year.
Oh, okay.
So that you're not throwing someone brand-new out at doing commentary. You've worked with them. They've been through it and they're comfortable behind the mic and then they get out on the system.
I think it's a good learning opportunity for our kids and it's a good, uh, opportunity to, uh, get some, uh, broadcast exposure for our kids as well, so.
Having said that, I would, uh, recommend approval of that contract.
Moving through. Second?
I heard, I heard Kyle and Matt were second.
I got it.
I think that's two sponsors right there. Those guys are both eager to sponsor, so. Krondax first and then Kansas last.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's on number eight in the contract. Uh, GPTV agrees to provide the following services to client. On-school permit, then, and then item D is on-school premises instruction to the student broadcast production teams.
Will they come in and work with our teachers?
Okay, but that says to the student teams, not just with the teacher. And that's, you know, we're pretty particular about the teachers we put in our classrooms to work with our students. But this says we're going to allow someone else from their company to come in. And, and I assume you, I mean, I haven't heard any discussion about this before, so that's probably why I'm concerned about. And I'm sure you've studied it and all of the references and everything.
And all that, what you're leading to.
But you're satisfied that whoever they send will be okay to put in the classroom with our students.
Yeah, and we'll have to vet them, you know, just like we would anybody else that's in our classroom and have to make those requirements. That's a good point.
Good question.
The company is an albatross of, of the college center in Claremore. And, uh, we will definitely, any vendor that we do business with that sends people to come buy our property and work with our students will have to do the felony sex offender affidavit. That guarantees that they don't have anyone that's like that. We won't actually do those records checks. They would be expected to do them. And they're, and.
Through the.
Provide to us.
That's the kind of reassurance.
Yeah, let's say.
Unless they might not hurt to refer to that going in the contract. They'll, they'll be part of, of the paperwork that I send them when they become a vendor. Good, good catch. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yeah. Going on to the Carver agreement.
This is, uh, an agreement to allow us to utilize the gymnasium in the Port Tito Washington Community Center during inclement weather, uh, for EE classes while we're under construction at the Carver Early Child Head Center. Uh, they graciously allowed us to, uh, to use that facility without this being in place. A verbal agreement basically between Mr. Porter and myself. All they've asked in return is that we assist them in maintaining their property during the duration of this agreement, which we are more than happy to do.
I was over there Thursday for their, uh, music program, uh, and they, uh, let the kids use their gym next door, Carver Center. And they, it was, it was so good. Uh, but I had a chance to visit with him about that and he said they were happy, just like Carl said, they were happy to, uh, be a good partner with, um, with Carver and, um, uh, let him use that. But he asked me, you know, are we gonna get a written agreement? And I, I was able to say to him, yeah, we have it on the agenda for Monday night. So he said, not that it's, he said, it's not anything other than just, uh, liability issues and things like that. He said, we're happy to continue doing what we're doing. We just need to make sure we're covered in so be all. And I said, that's, that's correct. So that's what this is. A recommendation to, uh, to approve that agreement.
Should we vote on the Carver thing? I'm losing track where I am. Do we have a motion?
Need a motion.
Okay, I need a motion and then a second.
I'll move too.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think there's any new business discussed tonight. Uh, brings us to reports. First off, superintendent's report.
Okay, board members, uh, you've got several things at your place. You've got a new, uh, Enid, uh, go card that, uh, allow you to, uh, get into any, uh, DPS athletic events. Also David Allen events and, uh, NOC events and, uh, JUCO World Series. Got a Christmas card there from, uh, Waller Middle School. Happy birthday to Will Joe yesterday.
Hey.
And to Carol, both on the same day.
Yeah.
Yeah, happy birthday to y'all. Uh, you, you have, uh, a draft school calendar there at your place for next year, fifteen, sixteen. And, uh, Melanie has, uh, headed up, uh, this committee and everything is roughly the same except with, with the exception of their, uh, that committee's recommendation for Thanksgiving. And you'll note there in November that they are recommending, and this is not an action out of you guys tonight. We've got several things to get to, uh, with other folks before we bring it to you guys for recommendation. I just thought it'd be a good idea to.
I just thought it'd be a good idea to let you take a look at it. But they're recommending a whole week off of Thanksgiving, and what that would necessitate would be go, to go slightly, slightly longer in May. So you'll notice if we do that, that we would not be getting out until last day of school will be May the twenty fifth with a teacher work day on the twenty sixth and then. Any thing else you'd like to add on that?
Matt, I thank Tori for helping surround the committee.
Thanks for serving as the board representative on that committee.
Matt and Sheila also are representatives on the committee as well.
Is there a reason for going longer at Thanksgiving?
It was recommended by the principals that certainly, yeah. I mean, that was a recommendation that they gave.
I didn't know this was some, a trend or something, deer season or?
There are other districts. There, there are other districts across the state that are going a week at Thanksgiving.
So did we have to just somewhere else make up for those days?
We did, and can you go longer in May?
Two days longer.
No, you couldn't pass through, answer Kyle, because there's low incidents on those days typically too.
That is probably the biggest reason the principals recommended that, because if we have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday off for Thanksgiving, a lot of folks won't send their kids to school on Monday and Tuesday, and their tennis dips significantly. That's probably the number one reason I'd do it. Couple other items you have at your place, you've got a copy of what Florida School Board Association has approved in a waiver resolution. And without going through all that, basically, it's a front back document, and I'll just summarize it by saying that they have been one of the frontrunners as far as school board associations in the nation as far as coming out more strongly against the over reliance on high stakes testing. And that's what that resolution is about. So I would imagine that there'll be some more states, school board associations doing that as well. Then the last sheet is our enrollment sheet, and you see our enrollment is currently at eight thousand and sixty-five. Do have several other items here. Wanted to mention to everyone that tomorrow, here in this room, from three thirty to four thirty, we'll have a retirement reception for Warren Hemfling, who has been with the district for over forty years, is that right? And he's in our technology department, and we would certainly invite you guys to come by for that. Some of us won't be here in the room to do that, because we'll, we are interviewing head football coach candidates all day tomorrow. And we're gonna start out in here and then move next door, so they can come in and set up for Warren's reception. A few other things. You've seen some of the documents that we have forwarded to you on strategic planning, and Amber's done a really good job of communicating that information. The paper gave us some, a good article as well on that topic. Amber sent out today information on the January twelfth meeting. Melody Pascal is actually coming to Rotary on that day to talk to the business group that is there at noon. And then on that evening at six P M., she'll conduct a meeting at the high school food court, and the entire community is invited for that. Then we've got our, you all know the rest of the schedule on the strategic planning. The twentieth will have focus group meetings, and February the sixth and seventh will have a design team, two day meeting. The focus group sessions on the twentieth will be comprised of different segments. Parents, high school students, teachers, eighth grade students, central office administration, building principals, community members, and parents. And then we'll run the online survey also from January twenty second through February the fourth, so people can have an opportunity to provide their input that way as well. We will start back up with our legislative breakfasts on the second Friday of each month, January through May. And our, the first one of those, and you guys are invited to attend if you want to, and that's at seven A M. here in this room, second Friday morning of each month, January through May. So the first one will be conducted on January the ninth at seven A M., and we'll invite the legislators and superintendents from the area schools. And you guys are certainly invited if you would like to attend with us.
And FYI, breakfast is served at a cost of five bucks?
Yes.
Have that changed?
All right, a few other items here. I forwarded to you guys, and you probably also received from Kay Jones, State Department, a copy of your school board training hours. And I know that Colin had a question about his. Is anybody else?
I never got anything.
I've never got anything, because I'd like to see.
Okay. I thought I forwarded that to you guys.
You must add that to the list of things I haven't got from him.
Carl's gonna check on that for you tomorrow.
I'll check with him tomorrow and see what you can get into those.
Well, it was that night of our special planning session, I registered for it. And then it said, okay, now you'll get a follow-up email on how to get into the webinar, and I've never gotten that.
And then I will forward this, I thought I forwarded that to you guys Friday, but maybe I didn't, but I will. And so it says, if you believe there are errors in your board points, please email Kristy Henshu at accreditation. She can verify with OSSBA and make corrections. I will not be surprised if there are several errors, so do not get concerned until after she has had a chance to check with OSSBA. Please have patience as we work to correct this. We're working on some solutions, so this does not ever happen again. It is really important that if there are errors that you notify us as soon as possible, so it will be corrected prior to your accreditation visit. And then she's got a list of the, each board member and the hours that you guys have obtained as far as, I'll forward that to you guys tomorrow. You may have seen where Phillips and Born took another job in Kansas. So they, the paper has just completed their search, and Sally Ann Asher will be the new education reporter for the newspaper. And she is scheduled to start on December the twentieth. That's a, that's Saturday. It's kind of a strange day to start, but that's what the press release said. So I'm assuming she will be with us in January. Want to add anything to that?
Just excited to meet her.
Just came out of OSU Journalism School. Okay. All right. We were successful in our effort to get the six A state baseball tournament here at David Allen Ballpark, so that's great. And that'll be in, we'll be hosting that in May. This building next door is being renovated. We would like to replace that old marquee sign with an electronic marquee sign. And Carl and I went to the city meeting the other day where they were talking about signage and gave them our dimensions and everything. And so we are, they assure us that it looks like we can come back with a similar sized sign.
Yes.
All right, so Carl's gonna work with them to make sure we can get one that is compliant, so that'll be good. Just about done. Quit tapping your foot.
I'd ask you to wait.
All right, so this doesn't apply to you, but January is school board recognition month. We'll, we'll give everybody a Hershey's kiss, except for. Our district will be nominated for a district of distinction with the journal called District Administration VA. I believe that may be a publication of AASA, American Association of School Administrators, if that's not wrong. So we'll let you know if we are successful in that effort. We are also going to attempt to do more of our training through an online site. That should help us tremendously when we get to the beginning of each school year. And we've gotta do all those required things that the state requires employees to do, you know, training on bloodborne pathogens and training on sexual harassment and all that. There's a whole long list of that stuff. But if, for us to be able to have access to, say to a new teacher, you could go online at your leisure and do this training, and then it provides you with a certification of completion, and then give them a deadline that we have to have it in by will be very convenient. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that we're moving in that direction. We also eventually are gonna move in the direction that I believe will be win-win for hourly employees. Currently, Carl correct me if I'm wrong, but the current practice is for hourly employees that, that are throughout the district is to fill out a time sheet. And then we get this mass paperwork monthly that goes to the business department, and they have to sift through these mounds of paperwork to verify, et cetera. Well, we're going to go to, for lack of a better term, eventually, a time clock issue that will be electronic. And it protects the employees and also eliminates mounds of paperwork from the business office, so we think it'll be win-win for everybody. When we did, we're not ready to roll that out yet, but when we do get ready to roll that out, we're gonna start with our office, hourly employees first. Get, try to get the kinks worked out of it, and then roll it out to the other hourly employees in the school district. And when I did this in a former district, it, it worked well by us doing it in our office first. So I think that'll be win-win. I, I don't have any timeline. You have an idea of a timeline on that?
Start focusing on it right after the first of the year.
And then from our mention, or I think it was last month, that some board member, Will Joe was it you saying that you weren't getting advanced information as frequently as you had in the past, so has that gotten better over the last month or two, or do you recall?
I don't know. I appreciate getting the list of the school assemblies for Christmas. That was good.
So talk about the process of how that information gets rolled out. I know Baby puts some stuff together and sends it out.
There's a couple of ways. Really, the master calendar is on the website, and our web soft, software fortunately, when a school adds a school event to their local calendar, it automatically feeds up and actually feeds back down, district events into their calendar. So what we do once a week is we pull from that comprehensive calendar and we send, it's really meant to be primarily a media opportunities list so that the media knows where they can go for school photos. But we also send that to administrators. We are now sending it to the board, so if you're not receiving that, please let us know. Just really gives you a weekend glance. If you'd like to plan ahead, you can always go look at the, the calendar on the website, because there'll be some dates even already for May that are up on the website. Then also, if it's an event with special emphasis where the board, where the administrator or the school building would like to invite the public and maybe invite the newspapers specifically, have me do a press release, then they fill out a good news form, and we submit it that way as well. So there's a couple of ways for them to get the word out.
So does Baby send a monthly calendar of events or just weekly?
Weekly.
Okay, so after you mentioned that to me, I went and asked her if she had you guys on that group list, and she did not, so she added you. So hopefully I'll be giving that more frequently now. You probably saw where the no child left behind waiver for Oklahoma was approved. That's the good news. The bad news is it's only approved for the remainder of this school year, and then we'll see what happens after that. Okay, we are, how are we coming on the board members' pictures and bio on the website?
Great, we have had several people who have responded to the survey, several people who I know are making it, gonna be taking care of that soon. And as they trickle in, we're preparing those. We will wait till we receive those from everyone to put them online, but.
It's holding itself.
I told, I told this person I was gonna point fingers.
All right. I was like, I know I started it. I don't know if I have.
I was betting on Colin.
I'll tell you one, if I haven't heard from you after the holiday, I will cut you down individually, but I'll, I, I can allow that.
I do know I sent the picture other than the booking picture that I got when I joined the school board.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Wade, can you follow that?
Uh, no, sir. I really appreciated the presentation from young Mr. Bravender tonight, to see that he's thriving in his education even during the deployment, so. And I just wanted you all to, to see this. I don't have enough copies for everybody, so you may just wanna take a look at it and pass it back down to me if you don't wanna keep it. But I just wanted to make everybody aware of this program. For several years, Vance and Enid Public Schools has had a relationship. I call the Vance Adopt a School Project, where different squadrons from the base have adopted different schools. This is the list of the squadrons and the schools that they have adopted for this year. Most of these relationships existed last year. Some noticeable changes is, is that we now have squadrons adopting all three of the middle schools, which was something that we wanted to make sure happened this year. So basically, the way the, the program is designed is mainly it is for military members to get into the schools to provide mentoring, tutoring, reading to children, interacting with children in a positive way. And the volunteers primarily get trained through our office. We make sure that they fill out the appropriate forms and get them into your all's office. And they've done a lot of good things from just spending time at the schools, like I said, reading, mentoring, tutoring, to getting involved in different carnivals and so forth, and providing volunteer support for that. So that's been a great program for several years, and we appreciate the opportunity for our men to get in there and work with the children.
Does some of them help with crosswalks as well?
I know that Lieutenant Venable personally serves as a crosswalk guard at Waller.
Yes.
Yeah. Lieutenant Venable has a lot of energy, so he's, he's involved in a lot of ways. I know that for sure, so.
I know, I know what the fifth and the thirty-third are. Could you run through those and tell us what each of those actually mean?
Yeah, LRS is logistics readiness squadron, so they manage the logistics of the base. They took over the adopt, adopting Eisenhower, because we used to have a communications squadron on base that was swallowed up by the operations support squadron. So the communications squadron used to take care of Eisenhower, logistics readiness has taken over that. The fifth is our reserve squadron, so primarily reserve pilots are part of that squadron. Stus is the student squadron, so all of our student pilots. A lot of times, they, they spend a few months waiting for their class date to start, so they have quite a bit of time to volunteer and get involved in the community before their class date starts, so.
So these are the students that we call casuals?
Yes, yeah, that's right. And then the medical group takes care of Glenwood. SFS is security forces squadron. They take care of Garfield. The comptroller squadron, Carl's counterpart that takes care of the base, has adopted Monroe. Force support squadron has adopted Emerson. Force support provides all the support services on base from managing all the food facilities, child care facilities, so forth. Thirty-third is one of the flying training squadrons, and then operations support squadron manages all the operations side except for the flying. They're the air traffic controllers and make sure that all the planes get off the ground and all that, so.
What's the possibility for getting a few more of our elementarys covered? Or are you stretched pretty thin as it is right now?
As far as squadron's large enough to do this and having enough volunteers, we are stretched fairly thin. It'll be something that we'll definitely address again next year, and it's always an evolving thing. And basically, the efforts are coordinated between the P O C, the squadron P O C, and the principal, as far as what the principals needs are, so.
Looks very helpful.
Thank you. Well, I'm excited to see some of the schools you do cover. I mean, it's great that, as you know, the base isn't very convenient to coolage. But you got folks going out there, so thank you for that, and that's a great report.
I got an invitation from Vance today to attend the hail and farewell on January fifteenth. What is that exactly?
Would you like me to answer that?
Sure, go ahead.
That means that you are promptly being recommended to be one of the honorary commanders for a squadron or a fly or something. And the hailing farewell is the dinner where the ones going out are there and the ones coming in are there. And it's just what it is. Hail, hail is to the ones coming in, and farewell is the ones going out. It's, it's just a dinner to celebrate that, so.
Thank you.
Been there, done that.
I'm looking forward to it.
It's, it's fun. You'll enjoy it. Brings us to board comments and our questions, and I'm gonna start us off with the board. Brings us to board comments and questions and I'm gonna start us off with a board comment just because I've got a card I'd like to read from Jimmy Anderson and, uh, some of you are new enough, you may not know about this, but this is a group that wanted the fountain rebuilt at the high school with the bricks in just the right place, if you recall that, and so this card is to the Enid School Board members, with named bricks for every member of our class now in place, thank you for your support and Carl White's guidance, our E H S class of fifty fountain is whole again, sincerely Jim Lee Anderson, class of nineteen fifty. So, anyway, they're, they're thrilled with the way it ended up, so. That's good, anybody else have comments or?
Uh, one other comment, uh, you all probably, uh, well, you may or may not have heard that, um, one of our longtime employees, uh, Johnette Ellis, used to be Bracy, um, passed away this morning, longtime librarian specialist for the district, um, so, just wanted to pass that along to you.
Dr. Floyd, did you want to talk to me about the meeting we attended today?
Uh, that, um, I think, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Dr. Floyd now attended a meeting at the State Department of Education today at which, Joel Robinson, the, the chief of staff for Dr. Marisi and Dr. Marisi were present as well as people in the state aid, uh, division that calculate our state aid formula. If I could digress just a minute, Dr. David Pennington, superintendent at Ponca City, uh, has kinda spearheaded an investigation into how the ad valorem assessment ratios, which vary from county to county, are adjusted for in the formula. And it's been discovered that the State Tax Commission was not properly adjusting for the differences in the assessment ratios and therefore school districts and counties that have a much higher assessment ratio specifically for, uh, personal property for commercial and agricultural entities within our district were actually being charged too much in the state aid formula for ad valorem taxes. And it's a fairly significant difference, uh, of the, the required assessment ratio at the state level is eleven percent of the value of that property is, is assessable for, uh, the purpose of calculating ad valorem and of course our state formula is supposed to be an equalization formula that gives more state aid to poorer districts and less to richer districts. However, if you're at or above eleven percent or if you're above eleven percent, then they're supposed to write off that difference and for Garfield County, our assessment ratio is fifteen percent on that commercial and ag, and agricultural personal property. It amounts to a significant dollar figure, a minimum of about a quarter of a million dollars in state aid, maybe as much as four hundred thousand dollars according to the calculations I did when we got back this afternoon.
That's just for our district and just for one year.
Correct, this has been going on for twenty-two years, uh, we don't hold out much hope of getting any back payments, but we are hopeful that, uh, we will be able to, get these calculations corrected for the midterm adjustments. However, our meeting today, uh, we left with a bit of, uh, a bad feeling, uh, actually we felt like we were kinda being stonewalled or put off and that this was gonna be kind of a can, it would be kicked down the road to the next administration and that there is a statute in place that requires that those midterm adjustments are done by January fifteenth. Well, the tax commission is not going to get the correct information to the State Department by that time, so it looks like unless we do something, we may be out of luck in terms of getting an adjustment for this year. Uh, this amounts collectively statewide to over ten million dollars, uh, Oklahoma County alone has, has, uh, I believe theirs is at thirteen point seven five, so they have a significant adjustment that would drive more state aid into those schools. So Oklahoma City, Middel, uh, Putnam City, Western Heights, we're all in attendance as well as Enid and Ponca City and Edmond. We met after the meeting at the State Department at the School Board Association Building and basically I think we've arrived at the conclusion that we need to investigate the possibility of asking for an injunction to prevent the State Department from calculating the midterm adjustment until they can get it right.
And here's why, is because the state law clearly states all of what he just said, that, and so we're trying to, by, by filing the injunction, it does a couple of things. One is it kinda forces their hand on complying with the law and, and Carl's right, the chances of them going back twenty-four years and, and, and making that up, it's probably not gonna happen. But, we don't need this administration, meaning Marisi and, and Joel Robinson and those guys, to kick the can down the road to the new state superintendent and her new administration because, A, that's gonna be too late by the time she takes over in mid-January and then they get to wash their hands of it when they were notified of this issue back in August, September, right? And they just have kinda set on it and here we are now, December's getting ready for the midterm adjustments and nothing has happened and we didn't get a warm and fuzzy feeling from them today that they were too worried about trying to make sure that, that it did happen. So the only way to force their hand and make sure that it possibly does happen this year, which again, it's about a quarter of a million dollars just for our district, is to, uh, maybe file an injunction and the superintendent of Ponca City, uh, who's also president of, uh, A A S A this year, is, was going to touch base with, uh, um, the same law firm that we use in Tulsa, um, and s, talk to them about what the next steps would entail in order to get that done. And then he was gonna get back with that whole group today to, uh, to see if, uh, make sure that everybody was comfortable in doing that. So having said all that, um, uh, there may be some, uh, legal fees spread out amongst all those districts, there are going to be winners and losers, there are winners and losers in that situation, uh, all those districts that Carl mentioned are actually winners, um, you can kinda look at it that way, we say we're one of the winners if they rectify, but if you think about it over the long term, over a twenty-four year period, we've been losers all those times because we haven't been getting what the law requires us to get because of the state aid, uh, not miscalculation, but their inability to comply with the law. So, um, so we'll wait to hear back from, uh, Dr. Pennington, uh, from Ponca City as to what the law firm says and then we'll bring you more information on that. I mentioned to you that we'll be interviewing, uh, head football coach candidates tomorrow. If the group can come to consensus on a long finalist, my intent would be to, uh, do additional reference checks and criminal record check, et cetera, uh, Wednesday morning and I wanted to, uh, find out from you guys if, uh, we can, um, get down to a long finalist, if you guys, if we could have a, uh, quorum present at a potential call board meeting Friday at noon for just a one, maybe two item agenda, it'll take ten, fifteen minutes. Uh, one item might possibly be to hire a football coach, uh, the other one might possibly be to approve this, uh, participation in this, uh, issue that Carl was just talking about. How many could make a fifteen-minute meeting on Friday at noon? Twenty-three, four by six, good, we would have a quorum then. If we get to that point, I will let you know, uh, if we have a call board meeting, we've got to notify, um...
Before noon Wednesday?
Before noon on Wednesday, so we'll let you know what comes out of our day-long interview session tomorrow. Um, I have invited, uh, Kyle to, uh, sit in on the, uh, help us on the interview group as well as a community member, um, Randy Chelfe as well as myself, Melanie, Jim Beer Schmidt, uh, Bill Mayberry, and who am I leaving out, Amber? Yep, so I think that's it. That's all I had, sir.
Can you add the comments? Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the next regular meeting is Monday, January nineteenth at six, right here, in the, in this boardroom. Uh, I'm assuming we do need to go into executive session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Is there a motion to do that?